Good afternoon and welcome to the joint public hearing for the Sparrow Point Container Terminal. My name is Angie Ashley and I will be facilitating today's virtual hearing. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Baltimore District and Maryland Department of the Environment are conducting two public hearings on this project. This is the second of two joint public hearings on the proposed Sparrow Point Container Terminal project in Baltimore County. This joint public informational hearing will provide members of the public the opportunity to present views, opinions, and information on the Corps and MDE that the Corps and MDE will consider in evaluating the impacts of the proposed project on the public interest. Before we get started, we'll review a few housekeeping items. This hearing is being recorded. Live captioning is available should you want it. Please refer to the graphic on the slide in front of you. To turn on closed captionings, click the more icon, scroll down and select language and speech, and then select show live captions. During this presentation, you will not be able to turn on your cameras or your microphones until the public hearing portion of the meeting. Once the presentation is complete and we open the hearing for public testimony, if you are providing testimony, you will be able to unmute and turn on your camera. To provide public testimony today, please use the raise hand function if you would like to speak. You will be given access to unmute yourselves and turn your camera on in the order that your hand is raised. To unmute, you will need to agree to use the your audio and video and recording and transcription and co-piling. If you have joined by phone and would like to provide public testimony, you will be able to press star six to unmute when called on. Oral testimony will be limited to four minutes or less per person, depending on the number of commenters. This hearing will end shortly after all comments have been received. You may only testify once, but you may always you have the opportunity to provide your testimony in writing. We will share more information about that in future slides. If you're here for informational purposes and do not wish to comment or cannot stay for the entire meeting, you can learn more on the project websites. Those websites were presented on the slide previously and we will post them in the chat momentarily. Again, if you would like to make a comment after the program today, please use the raise hand icon. You can begin doing that now and we will be calling on you in the order that you raised your hand. Just to review the agenda for today's hearing, we will start with a welcome and some introductory comments from the Maryland Department of Environment and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We will then have a brief presentation from the applicant. Finally, I will review the ground rules for the hearing. At that point, we will start taking public comments. I would now like to introduce John Stewart, Acting Chief of the Maryland Department of Environment, Title Wetlands Division. John?
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Stewart and I am the Acting Chief of the Federal Wetlands Division in the Wetlands and Waterways Protection Program within the Water and Science Administration at the Maryland Department of Environment. I will be the hearing officer for tonight's virtual public here informational hearing. Also an attendance from the department is Matt Wallach, Title Wetlands Division Project Manager. We are conducting a virtual public information hearing pursuant to subsection five dash zero two zero four of the environment article Code of Maryland Regulations twenty six dash two four dash zero one dash zero five in COMAR twenty six point zero eight point zero two point one zero F subsection two. The purpose of this virtual public informational hearing is for the applicant to present the proposed project entitled wetlands impacts that may be associated with proposed activity as well as any impact to water quality. In addition, the hearing provides the department with an opportunity to solicit additional information from interested persons. This hearing is not a contested case hearing under Maryland's Administrator Procedure Act. The statutory authority for the issuance of a title wetlands license is Title sixteen of the environment article annotated code of Maryland as implemented under COMAR section twenty three point zero two point zero four and subtitle twenty six point two four. State title wetlands license is issued by the Board of Public Works consisting of the governor, state treasurer, and comptroller of the state of Maryland, based upon a report and recommendation submitted to the board by the department. In accordance with the Maryland Constitution, the board is the sole body with authority over state property, including state title wetlands. In its proprietary authority, the board has the right to grant a third party a license to construct or conduct an activity in state title wetlands. According to section sixteen dash two zero two of the environment article, the secretary of the department shall assist the board in determining whether to issue a license to dredge or fill state wetlands. The secretary shall submit a report indicating whether the license should be granted, including any recommended terms, conditions, and consideration after consultation with the applicable federal, state, and local entities, issuance of sufficient public notice, and conducting any requested here. Consideration of any public comments received and consideration of any other information the secretary thinks is advisable. In making its decision, the board is guided by the public policy of the state, considering applicable ecological, economic, developmental, recreational, and aesthetic values to preserve tidal wetlands and prevent their destruction. I will now read briefly from the regulations so that it is clear how we're going to proceed. An applicant and any interested person shall be given an opportunity at the informational hearing to present facts and make statements supporting or opposing the license. Questions may be asked of and directed to the hearing officer, but cross examination may not be conducted. The hearing is not a contested case hearing under Maryland's Administrator Procedure Act. The order of the presentation is determined by the hearing officer and may be conducted as follows. Introduction of the activity and participants by the hearing officer, presentation of the proposed project by the applicant, questions about the activity, statements by public officials, statements in opposition, statements in support, and closing the public informational hearing by the hearing officer. The hearing officer has the authority and duty to conduct a full and fair public informational hearing, act to avoid unnecessary delay and to maintain order, regulate the course of the hearing and the conduct of the participants, extend the time period for providing supplemental written comments or information for inclusion in the hearing record, and rule upon and press for continuance of the hearing. At the close of the public commentary, the hearing officer shall prepare an official record of the public informational hearing in comments. It is also the responsibility of my office to evaluate requests for water quality certifications under section four zero one of the Clean Water Act, which requires Maryland as a certifying authority to determine whether discharge associated with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permits application in A B dash zero two zero zero two two zero two three, sorry, dash six one two zero zero complies with the state's water quality standards. The department's authority is found in subtitle nine of the environment. Each certification request received through our regulatory program has specific and unique issues and impacts that must be considered with regards to the Maryland's water quality standards. The department is neither a proponent nor an opponent of any project. In summary, the Maryland Department of Environment is conducting a virtual public informational hearing for state wetlands application number twenty three dash W L dash zero seven six two submitted on August twenty second, twenty twenty three in the Clean Water Act, section four zero one, water quality certification request twenty four dash W Q C dash zero zero four five, which was requested December third, twenty twenty four. The project is summary is as follows. The Trade Point T I L Terminals LLC has applied for the construction of a new container terminal in the Port of Baltimore. The Sparrow Point Container Terminal will be located at the Cook Point Peninsula of Trade Point Atlantic and consists of an approximate three thousand foot marginal wharf with up to nine ship to shore cranes, a containing yard, gate complex, intermodal rail yard, and various support structures. To provide vessel access to the wharf, the project includes deepening and widening the existing Sparrow Point Channel and turning basin, which would require mechanical dredging dredging and placement of approximately four point two million cubic yards of dredged material. The maximum proposed dredging depth would be five fifty two point two two feet at mean low water. The proposed project would include the construction of a nineteen point six acre offshore dredged material containment facility on the west side of Cook Point in the existing in-water coal pier channel to provide placement capacity for approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of dredge material. Of the remaining dredge material, approximately one point two to one point seven million cubic yards would be placed onsite at the Upland High Head Industrial Basin. Approximately one point two five million cubic yards would be placed at the existing Masonville D M C F dredge material containment facility in Door Cox Creek D M C F owned by the Maryland Port Administration. And approximately one point five million cubic yards will be barged to Norfolk Ocean Disposal Site. It designated offshore disposal area located in the Atlantic Ocean, approximately seventeen miles from the entrance to Chesapeake Bay. Mitigation is being assessed for the impacts to open water. Thank you, and now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Joseph Devia with the Army Corps.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Devia and I am Chief of Maryland North Section in the Regulatory Branch of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Baltimore District. On behalf of Colonel Francis Para, the Baltimore District Commander, I will be serving as the hearing officer for the Corps of Engineers, Section ten, Section four oh four, permit evaluation requirements of today's hearing. With me here today are the Corps project managers Maria Chirisi and Nicole Nastef of the Corps Baltimore District. We welcome you to this Corps and MDE public hearing on the Sparrow Point Container Terminal project. I would like to thank Trade Point T I L Terminals LLC for providing the support services to allow us to hold this virtual public hearing and thank you for participating in our regulatory review process. It is the responsibility of my office to evaluate applications for Department of the Army permits for any proposed work in waters of the United States, including wetlands. The Corps authority is found in section four oh four of the Clean Water Act and section ten of the Rivers and Harbors Act. The Corps is also reviewing this project under section fourteen of the Rivers and Harbors Act, thirty three U S C, section four oh eight, and section one oh three of the Marine Protection, Research, and Sanctuaries Act of nineteen seventy two. Each application received through our regulatory program has specific and unique issues and impacts that must be considered in relationship to weighing the potential benefits and detriments of the project. Please note that the Corps is neither a proponent or opponent of any project. The purpose of today's hearing is to inform you of this project and allow you the opportunity to provide comments to be considered in our Corps regulatory public interest review of the proposed work. This venue was for you to provide comments on the project and the Corps and MDE will not be responding to comments. In compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the lead federal agency for the project, in cooperation with other agencies, issued an impact statement for the proposed project. Further, at the conclusion of the Corps review process, the Corps will be preparing a statement of findings and record of decision for the project in which your comments will be included and addressed. Your comments are important in the preparation of this document and in our evaluation of this permit application. The decision on whether or not to issue a permit will be based on an evaluation of the probable impacts, including cumulative impacts of the proposed activity on the public interest and compliance with the Clean Water Act, section four oh four, B one guidelines. That decision will reflect the national concern for both protection and utilization of important resources. The benefits which may reasonably be expected to accrue from the proposal will be balanced against its reasonably foreseeable detriments. All factors that may be relevant to the proposal are considered. Among these are conservation, economics, aesthetics, general environmental concerns, wetlands, historic properties, fish and wildlife values, flood hazards, floodplain values, land use, navigation, shoreline erosion and accretion, recreation, water supply and conservation, water quality, energy needs, safety, food and fiber production, mineral needs, threatened and endangered species, cumulative impacts, consideration of property ownership, and in general, the needs and welfare of the people. Under this action and based on the current level of design, the placement of fill and structures for the entire project consists of a an approximate three thousand foot marginal wharf with up to nine ship to shore cranes, a container yard, gate complex, intermodal rail yard, and various support structures. To provide access to the wharf, vessel access to the wharf, the project would include deepening and widening the existing Sparrow Point Channel and Turning Basin, which would require mechanical dredging and placement of approximately four point two million cubic yards of dredge material. The maximum proposed dredging depth with negative two feet of over over depth would be negative fifty two feet at mean lower low water, and that would be negative fifty two point two two feet at mean low water. Following construction, maintenance dredging of the Sparrow Point Channel would be required. The project would include the construction of an offshore dredge material containment facility on the west side of Cook Point in the existing in-water coal pier channel to provide placement for approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of dredge material. The dredge material containment facility would permanently fill approximately nineteen point six acres of tidal waters. Of the remaining dredge material, approximately one point two to one point seven million cubic yards would be placed onsite at the Upland High Head Industrial Basin containment facility. Approximately one point two five million cubic yards would be placed at the existing Masonville dredge material containment facility located in Baltimore City, Maryland, and/or Cox Creek D M C F located in Anaronal County, Maryland, both owned by the Maryland Port Administration. And approximately one point five million cubic yards would be barged to the Norfolk Ocean Disposal Site, a designated offshore disposal area located in the Atlantic Ocean near the mouth of the Chesapeake Bay. Container vessels accessing the new terminal would utilize the Bruerton Federal Navigation Channel as the turning basin. Compensatory mitigation for unavoidable tidal water impacts associated with this this project is proposed to be satisfied through a combination of permitting responsible mitigation projects, including restoration, creation, and enhancement of tidal open water, emergent tidal wetlands, and shallow water habitat areas on the Trade Point Atlantic property and at the P V P West removal of derelict crab traps in the middle Chesapeake Bay and oyster reef restoration and seeding in the Chesapeake Bay. The comment period for this project extends to March twenty first, twenty twenty five. Comments received today and throughout the comment period will be considered. The time required to reach a Department of the Army permit decision is dependent upon necessary coordination of concerns with resource agencies, careful evaluation of all substantive comments, and ensuring statutory requirements are met. Again, thank you for attending this virtual public hearing and participating in the Corps Regulatory Review Process. I'll now turn it over to Angie.
Thank you, Joe. Now we will hear from the project applicant. We are joined today by Aaron Tomarcio, Executive Vice President of Corporate Affairs from Trade Point Atlantic, who will provide an overview of the proposed Sparrow Point Container Terminal project. After this, we will begin with your public comments. Aaron, over to you.
Thank you, Angie, and thank you to the Maryland Department of Environment and the Army Corps of Engineers for working with us throughout this year in this permitting process. Ten years ago, Trade Point Atlantic made a commitment to revitalizing Sparrow Point, cleaning up the legacy of the former steel mill and turning it into a global center for commerce and trade with fifty world-class tenants employing thirteen thousand people. Building on the success of the last ten years, the Sparrow Point Container Terminal takes the next logical step in realizing a fully revitalized Sparrow Point. In the fall of twenty twenty two, we announced a joint venture partnership Sparrow Point Container Terminal with Terminal Investment Limited, a subsidiary of Mediterranean Shipping Company, the world's largest shipper, to build a state-of-the-art container terminal here in Baltimore. From here, M S C will grow their east coast service and elevate Baltimore as a primary east coast container port, moving Baltimore from the sixth to the third largest container port in volume on the on the east coast. S P C T is a one billion private investment and a big bet on Baltimore and the state of Maryland. It will bring eight thousand jobs, eleven hundred of them union paying jobs that will work the wharf with an additional seven thousand jobs induced into our state and region. The project will also be built with the help of union labor and skilled trades from around the region. Maryland wins big, and this will help the opportunity to grow the economy in a very sustainable and meaningful way. In twenty twenty three, we submitted plans to federal and state agencies to transform the desolate three hundred and thirty acre Cook Point Peninsula into a thriving hub for commerce. Those plans require an extensive public process to analyze all elements of the project. Tonight's hearing is part of that process. Over the last two years, the project team has met with numerous community organizations and stakeholders to discuss the project and share information. We have attended over thirty community meetings, met individually with community leaders and elected officials to share information and receive feedback. We have issued press releases and relevant studies to share dredge material testing results with the public and provide regular updates. We have set up and promoted the website S P C T M D dot com, which serves as an information portal and repository of studies and information about the project. The site links to all federal and state sites about this project, and we encourage you to visit that site and use it as a source of information. We have also published a frequently asked questions document, which is available online, and we can also have hard copies sent to you. Please feel free to send us an email if you would like one. Over the last ten years, we have worked with the community to share in a vision for a revitalized Sparrow Point, one that is cleaner, greener, and better positioned for the future. The S P C T project helps grow and complete that vision. The timing and success of this project, given the current economic uncertainty facing our state, is more critical now than ever. We appreciate the support and engagement from the community that has helped clean up Sparrow Point and restore economic activity and jobs to the area. We thank you and we appreciate your interest in this project and we appreciate your feedback this afternoon. I'm going to hand it now back to Angie Ashley for the rest of the hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. The purpose of the hearing today is for the Army Corps, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Maryland Department of Environment to receive oral or written comments that will enable them to evaluate the proposed project's impact on the public interest. As the hearing facilitator, my role is to conduct a professional and orderly public hearing. I am dedicated to ensuring that members of the public have the opportunity to share their comments in an organized, fair, and respectful atmosphere. We look forward to hearing your perspectives. However, please be courteous. Offensive or profane language will not be tolerated. Neither I nor the presenters will respond to any of your questions or comments. We are here to listen today. We are interested in hearing comments related to the Sparrow Point Container Terminal project from all interested individuals. There may be additional concerns related to issues that are beyond the scope of this particular hearing. I ask that for this hearing today, we remain focused on issues associated with the proposed Sparrow Point Container Terminal project. Please remember that this hearing is being recorded. If you would like to provide public testimony today, please use the raise your hand function. When I call your name, when I call your name, speak clearly and provide your full name, spell your name, and please note if you're representing any organization. Please be advised that it is not necessary to read a statement to make it part of the official record. Written comments are also being accepted and will receive the same consideration as any oral statement provided today. There will be a four-minute pine limit for public testimony to ensure that everyone can be heard. This time will be displayed on the screen as we begin public testimony. The time will start after you turn on your camera, unmute, and introduce yourself. I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining so you can begin to wrap up your testimony. If you're unable to conclude your comments at the end of the time period, your microphone will be muted and we will move on to the next speaker. Again, you always have the opportunity to provide comments in writing, and we will share more information about how to do that on the slides. I will now call upon members of the public who would like to make public statements. Again, if you are interested in making a public comment today, please use the raise your hand function. I will now. We will go in order of hands raised. When I call your name, your microphone will be unmuted, then state your name, spell your name, and let me know if you're here representing an organization. Again, you will have four minutes to provide your public testimony. First up today, providing comment will be Andrew, followed by Holly M. Andrew, would you please unmute your microphone and turn on your camera, and I will go unmute and you can provide your testimony.
It should be on, I believe.
Yes, we can hear you. Would you please state and spell your name?
Andrew West, A N D R E W, W E S T. I am, first, I want to welcome Aaron Trade Point and M D and the Army Corps of Engineers for doing this. I represent what I feel is my community as well as the environment. That's my main concern. I also, secondly, represent both yacht clubs that are somewhat of an impact of this Pleasant Yacht Club and North Point Yacht Club. Plus, I think I represent the entire yacht club community, which consists of about eighty five thousand members, over a hundred clubs. But first and foremost, I want to speak to the environment and also make mention that Trade Point, I feel, has always been, at least for our community, a very good steward of the environment. So I'll start. Although we greatly are in favor of the Trade Point Atlantic development at Sparrow Point Container Terminal and realize its positive impact on the economic growth in Maryland, we cannot support the recommended mitigation efforts, specifically those intended to remove existing non-distressed land in Jones's Creek. I believe there are other mitigation efforts that can be used and will be more beneficial to the surrounding and affected communities and the entire bay ecosystem. I'm sure you will all see and hear the term B M P, which is best management practices throughout the entire aspect of this project, but I don't believe you'll see them, nor do I believe they are being considered with regards to the mitigation plan. In the project section mentioned here, it says there will be no recreational impact to the local community. It also includes the environmental justice section regarding the executive order and the revitalizing of our nation's environmental justice for all. There is a statement in the project construction section, again stating the project won't produce disproportionate impacts on recreation for the underserved communities. This is true in all aspects of the project except for the mitigation aspect. Please remember, we're in full support of the project, but believe it can proceed on schedule and on time, but with better mitigation efforts. I believe there's better way to mitigate the open water loss areas that are proposed in section ten point one, the removal of the five acres at North Point and Pleasant, the removal of the two point one made man laid at Craig Hill, and the removal of the southeast peninsula. The first two of these options are not historically damaged land due to the steelmaking. These two areas are natural lands that have always existed and should be considered for removal, not be considered. These two parcels of land always have existed and act as a natural breakwater to Jones's Creek. The removal of the southeast peninsula finger will remove a man-made natural breakwater that has been protecting this peninsula since it's been in and Jones's Creek. Second, I think there's far more beneficial ways to reach mitigation credits than the proposed ones they have. Such determinate impact on the local boating community and recreation. such determinate impact on the local boating community and recreation. And two of these more seventy-five-year-old clubs, the yacht clubs represent the poster child for environmental justice. I'm going to jump real quick because I'm running out of time. One of the remediation efforts I'd like them to consider, and I'll touch on the innovative methods for mediation as fast as I can. And also, I'm sure you know of mitigation credits. I'm sure you understand mitigation preference. Uh, and what I'm going to say is based on the crab pot section of the ninety thousand dollar per acre. I'm going to run out of time, so a lot of this is going to be, I guess, in my written report to you along with a bunch of other mitigation efforts. I realize I'm running out of time, so, uh, I appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. West. I appreciate that you were finishing up your comments and trying to wrap up, and it sounds like you're well aware of how to provide your additional comments in writing. Thank you very much for your testimony today. Next up, we have Holly Marson. Holly, do you mind unmuting, turning your camera on? And you should be able to provide your testimony.
Good afternoon. Sorry about my voice. I'm slowly losing it, so. Uh, my name is Holly Marson, M-A-R-C-I-N. I'm the Vice President of Operations at White Marsh Transport. Um, good afternoon again. Many here today have heard from me before, whether in person this week or previously in writing, about my unique perspective on this incredible joint opportunity between TradePoint Atlantic and Terminal Investments Limited. As the second generation of a family-owned and operated trucking company rooted in Sparrow Point, my family nearly employs one hundred people who live, have children actively participating in the school system, and enjoying the fruits of TPA's community efforts, we proudly stand behind their good faith and stewardship. I am hopeful today allows us to gracefully think about the impacts versus these distractions this grand project can have on your future, the future of your legacy, and the future of many generations to come. Today, I would like to emphasize the opportunities and improved infrastructure which are being spearheaded by TradePoint's current project for the container terminal. This week's recent community meeting shared many concerns about increased truck traffic and the impact on surrounding neighborhoods, although the focus was on the current and past few years of incredible traffic and congestion from the Port of Baltimore and Dundalk and through local neighborhoods or backroads. No one spoke of the large proposals and state highway projects currently being implemented. I understand this frustration and inconvenience as well as the incredible safety concerns that all have regarding the current and added workflow the container terminal could have. Fortunately, one key focus of this project has been an efficient, efficient and succinct traffic pattern by offering truck volume direct access one to six ninety-five and ultimately ninety-five highways. These proposals, which are easily accessible to the public and regularly updated, illustrate the conscious effort by TPA to accommodate the community's concerns as much as feasible. Likewise, TradePoint has spearheaded the application of anticipated revenue for additional Baltimore County infrastructure to allow police resources for community and traffic enforcement to the area. The FOP and TPA have taken much of the community's concerns into consideration when implementing new and improved resources to the Sparrow Point area. Finally, many here from the recent community meetings and expressing concerns question the authenticity of those of us who do not currently reside in this zip code. But I would like to bring attention to the fact that many of those same people have children and grandchildren, brothers and sisters, who no longer reside in this zip code either. I'm not mentioning this to throw stones, but rather to bring attention to my greatest concern. Many of those who proudly taunt, they worked at the steel mill, they know this ground inside and out, and all of these neighborhoods and concerns. This is why you can still afford to live here. Many have a pension or settlement from the old steel mill. But rather, many of those who have had to choose to move out or relocate have done so for opportunities elsewhere, careers for the safety and betterment of communities for their children. I wholeheartedly ask for you to please consider this when considering the future of this project. Consider the future of this community, not just the heritage. I ask you to consider the unemployment rate and the desperation of a once-thriving steel mill that employed thirty-one thousand jobs. I ask you to consider how many families and homes seven thousand careers can impact. How many lives can be saved and cycles broken for a better tomorrow simply with the pride one has in a career, a steady income, and establishing a stable home life? The Sparrow Point Container Terminal is an integral part of completing this bold vision to the redevelopment of the once barren and desolate steel mill site, and I ask that you stand in solidarity with TradePoint Atlantic, Terminal Investments, and MSC and the future of this community by keeping the generational prosperity here in the zip code.
Thank you, Ms. Marson. We appreciate your public comment. Okay, if there's anyone else joining us today who would like to provide testimony, all you need to do is press the Raise Hand function, the little hand, black and white icon that says Raise, and you will be able to provide testimony today, and we'll go in the order that folks raise their hand. I'm going to go on mute and wait to see if anyone raises their hand. Once again, if you've just signed on, welcome to the Joint Public Hearing for the Proposed Sparrow Point Container Terminal Project. We've concluded our speakers program and are here to take public, public comment and testimony on the project. If you would like to provide testimony, please use the Raise Hand function, and we will go in the order that you raise your hand. We'll keep this platform open, so please raise your hand if you'd like to provide testimony. Hi, David Thomas. I see that you would like to provide public testimony. If you would unmute and raise your hand, if you would unmute and turn your camera on, you'll be able to provide four minutes of public testimony.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much.
Hi.
Loud and clear.
My name is David, D-A-V-I-D, T-H-O-M-A-S, and I have been for the last fifteen years the Legislative Director of the Chesapeake Bay Yacht Clubs Association, which consists of over a hundred yacht clubs in five different states in the District of Columbia. Two of those clubs include the North Point Yacht Club where I am now and the Pleasant Yacht Club next door. I think you can see behind me the row of past Commodores of the yacht club. And then off to the side, you can see various materials that they have in terms of.
Mr. Thomas, your camera is not on.
Oh, it isn't? Okay.
No.
Well, we'll submit photography in follow-up to what I'm seeing here today. And, uh, the point is that this is a active community of voters that will be impacted, and we're very much hoping that there can be ways that the mitigation credits for the tidal waters that are being taken away can be compensated for in alternatives such as grab traps, abandoned derelict vessels, oyster bars, waterway improvement, waterfront mitigation, so that the impact of the proposal as it now stands, which will be to take and remove the prop-, the complete properties of these two yacht clubs, uh, bringing them out of existence. So the effort here is to save the environment, and that would include the land and occupancy and usage of, uh, the area by these yacht clubs. My understanding from the Commodore, Andrew West here of the, uh, North Point Yacht Club, is that the proposal to take out the docks and the slips and the yacht club itself will involve further dredging at a cost to tide point of some twenty-five million dollars. And, uh, it seems there are alternative, uh, mitigation credits that would be more environmentally beneficial and constructive than that proposal. And that's what we'd like to submit further materials on, together with, uh, the photography of back when this yacht club brought into creation, the garage, the docks, the clubhouse that I'm in, and, uh, started the intergenerational participation in aquatic and recreational boating activities, uh, here through the yacht club. And, uh, I'm getting kind of a feedback in what I've been saying here into the microphone. I've been doing my best to ignore it. I hope there's only one version that the court reporter is able to accurately take down, but, uh, we'd like to, uh, we're looking forward that the record will be held open until March twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We can hear you loud and clear. We appreciate your testimony. There's anyone else who would like to provide public testimony? If you would, please use the Raise Hand function. We'll call on you in the order that you raise your hand. If you'd like to provide testimony, just click the Raise Hand function, and we'll go in the order that your receipt, that we, uh, see that you've raised your hand. Uh, once you raise your hand and does, if you are providing public testimony, you'll be given access to unmute yourself and turn on your camera. I see there's some folks who have just joined us. Just want to welcome you to the Sparrow Point Container Terminal Joint Public Hearing hosted by the US Army Corps of Engineers and Maryland Department of the Environment. My name is Angie Ashley, and I'm facilitating the meeting this afternoon on their behalf. We're here to accept public testimony on the proposed Sparrow Point Container Terminal Project. To provide comment, just use the Raise Hand function, and you'll be able to provide four minutes of public testimony. Again, thank you for joining us and welcome to the Sparrow Point Container Terminal Joint Public Hearing. We're here to listen to public testimony on the proposed Sparrow Point Container Terminal project. If you would like to provide four minutes of public testimony, you can use the Raise Hand function. If you're having trouble using the Raise Hand function, we are going to take everyone off mute for a minute and allow you to speak in case you've been having any technical challenges with the platform today. So in about one minute, we'll be taking everyone off mute and allowing folks to speak if they would like to. If you would, when we come off mute, if you've been struggling with the platform and not able to use the Raise Hand function, when we take you all off of mute, um, if you would, just please state your name. We'll capture your name, and then we'll put everyone back on mute and unmute you in the order so that we can ensure everyone has time to provide public testimony. So at three forty-seven, we're going to unmute everyone for a couple of moments and see if anyone has been struggling with the platform and would like to provide public testimony. Meanwhile, at any time, you can use the Raise Hand function. Just click the little hand icon, and you'll be able to provide public testimony, and we'll have you in the queue. Just as a reminder, at three forty-seven, we're going to unmute everyone. If you happen to be dialed in on your phone and have been struggling with unmuting, you can press star six on your phone, and that will unmute you to, to allow you to provide public testimony once we allow that functionality. So at three forty-seven, we will be unmuting everyone. Just want to warn you in case you're driving. You can always self-select and put yourself back on mute. Okay, we're going to unmute you all and see if anyone would like to provide testimony. Just please state your name if you would like to. Anyone who wishes to unmute, they now have the ability to unmute. You can, you will unmute yourself, and you would need to agree to the use of audio and video, and then you may provide your name. Unmute has been, um, optioned for everyone, all attendees. Thank you so much, Amy. So if you would like to unmute yourself and provide your name, we can capture you in our list for the option to provide public testimony today. You may also use the Raise Hand function. I see there are some folks who have just joined us. Just want to welcome you to the Sparrow's Point Container Terminal Joint Public Hearing hosted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Maryland Department of the Environment. My name is Angie Ashley. We've completed our presentation for today and are here keeping this forum open for anyone who would like to provide public testimony. If you would like to provide public testimony, just use the raise hand function, and I will call on you to have you provide your testimony. We're keeping the platform open, and I will go back on mute. But if you'd like to provide testimony, please just raise your hand. Thank you so much.
Afternoon, everyone. This is the joint public hearing for the proposed Sparrow's Point container terminal project. My name is Angie Ashley. I'm facilitating the meeting on behalf of the Maryland Department of Environment and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. If you would like to provide public testimony this afternoon, please use the raised hand function. Just press the hand icon and you will be allowed to provide public testimony. The public comment period for this project is open through March 21st, and I will share on the screen the methods of being able to provide public comment in writing. But if you would like to provide oral public testimony today, please just use the raise hand function. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to the Sparrow Point Container Terminal project joint public hearing hosted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Maryland Department of the Environment. We've concluded our program for today, but we're here and open to take public comments. If you'd like to provide a public comment, please just use the raise hand function and we'll call on you and you'll be able to unmute and turn on your camera and provide public testimony. Again, if you'd like to provide any testimony during this hearing, please use the raise hand function and we'll call on you and you'll be able to unmute, turn on your camera and provide testimony. We'll be keeping this meeting open until 5:00 PM, so please use the raise hand function during the next 30 minutes. We'll be keeping the hearing open until 5:00 PM. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Jason. I see you have your hand up. Would you like to provide testimony? Hi, Jason. We're gonna, yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Hi, would you like to provide public testimony tonight?
Yes.
Great. Please go ahead. Will you state your name and spell your name?
My name, my name is Jason Rousson, J A S O N R O U S O N. I was, uh, my concern with the, uh, container ship or the container, uh, trade point is the fact that, uh, I have over fifteen years of, uh, experience driving containers for, uh, out of Seagirt Terminal. And, uh, basically what's with, what I'm seeing is that the, the amount of traffic that's going to be flowing up and down, uh, North Point, Sparrows Point, you know, the highways, uh, uh, Boeing Highway. Because the, because the, uh, bridge has been knocked down, you have to bring those containers through the city. And with most of the, the, uh, trucks that has to provide transportation to bring those containers through the city is going to put a lot of wear and tear on the, uh, public roads and streets because they are very heavy. Um, when you're talking about each container ship carrying over fifteen thousand, uh, containers, you're looking at each container has to be mounted to a truck. And you're going to have fifteen thousand trucks going through, um, you know, Sparrows Point, North Point, uh, Wolf Road, uh, trying to get those containers over there, you know, on various locations. So each ship carries fifteen thousand, uh, containers. Uh, you're going to probably have about, I'm gonna say five containers being offloaded at any time, day or night. And then you go, you're looking at, uh, uh, the cars that are being shipped overseas that's going to be coming in into, uh, that, that area as well because they ship cars. They ship all kinds of, uh, fact, uh, uh, tractors, hazardous materials, um, waste, anything that they can take back and forth from overseas. Uh, because, you know, when the bridge went down, that, that shut off that route because they will go straight down to the end of harbor and drop it off at Seagirt. But because of the, the bridge collapsing or being knocked or knocked down, taken down, um, they brought, they are bringing that, that traffic over to Sparrows Point, Wolf Road. And, uh, and you're talking about, if you're talking about fifteen thousand containers, that's fifteen thousand trucks. Um, added about, I'm gonna say five ships a week. You're looking at over, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say over a hundred thousand, uh, tr- uh, tractors and, and, uh, and, uh, commercial trucks going up and through there, up and through, uh, Sparrows Point. That is going to be, uh, tragic, uh, tragedy waiting to happen because, uh, it's just too much traffic for that little area. Um, uh, you, you're already choked down as it is. You can't get back across, uh, uh, you know, uh, over the bridge, six ninety-five, can't get back over that bridge going that way. So you're gonna get, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna choke the, uh, community up with nothing but traffic, tractor trailers and other big equipment coming through there, uh, hauling the, uh, all the, all the merchandise and goods to the stores going on that side of, on that side of the harbor. Uh, that is, that's, that's going to really, uh, hamper the, the environment. That's going to really hamper, uh, the, the, the traffic's pollution. Um, you know, you're talking about, uh, uh, police. Uh, you, you're talking about all types of things that's going to happen down there. Uh, the jobs that they are proposing to, to bring to the community. A lot of those jobs are going to be outsourced to robots. So the robots are going to take a lot of those jobs and, uh, and they're, they're gearing up for robots as we speak. So I wouldn't put any weight on, uh, worrying about those, a lot of those jobs for the, for the young is going to literally go to the robots. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who's on the call tonight who would like to provide public testimony? We're nearing the end of our meeting. If you would like to provide public testimony, please use the raise hand function. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else who would like to provide public comment. Um, it seems as though everyone who's indicated interest in providing public testimony this afternoon has had that opportunity. But if you've changed your mind and would like to provide public testimony, we'll do one last call. Please use the raise hand function. And you'll be able to unmute and provide your testimony. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. So I would like to thank you all very much for taking the time to participate in this hearing this afternoon. Instructions for submitting comments can be found on the websites that have been posted in the chat. Um, and more information about the project can be found on those websites as well. I'm going to turn the meeting over to John Stewart and of the Maryland Department of Environment and Joseph Devia of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who will close out the hearing. Over to you, John.
All right. Thank you. The former hearing record will remain open until Friday, March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. All correspondence must be postmarked or emailed by this date. Uh, there are, uh, the slides are explaining how to submit additional comments. Is it slide up? Please forward any additional comments you would like to make for the record to by email at matthew.walach@marilyn.gov. That's M A T T H E U E W dot W A L L A C H at marilyn.gov. It's spelled out. It's on the slide now. Or by mail to the Maryland Department of Environment, care of Matt Walach, title Wetlands Division, eighteen hundred Washington Boulevard, Suite four three zero, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two three zero dash one seven zero eight. After the hearing record closes, the department will review and consider all the comments received during the comment period. If necessary, the department may request additional information from the applicant to address certain comments. After all relevant issues have been resolved, the department will make its decision and file a report and recommendation to the Wetlands Administrator for the board, who shall then present the proposed project for decision at a public meeting of the board in accordance with Comar, Chapter twenty-three point zero two point zero four. The board's decision will be final and there will be no further opportunity for administrative review. Any person with standing may petition for judicial review of the board's decision in Circuit Court of Baltimore County. The petition for judicial review must be filed within thirty days of the board's decision. The public comments received will also be considered by the department when rendering a decision on certification request number twenty-four dash WQC dash zero zero four five. The department is obligated to issue, deny, or waive certification of the project by December third, two thousand and twenty-five. The department's decision and accompanying information will be sent to the interested persons list, the applicant in the court. Any person who's agreed by the department's decision may appeal the decision by filing a request within thirty days of the publication of the WQC decision in accordance with Comar twenty-six point zero eight point zero two point one zero F subsection four. If you're unsure, if you're on the interested, interested persons list, if, for example, you've learned of the hearing through MDE's website, please ensure your name is, um, added to, um, the, the interested persons list by emailing, uh, Matt Walach, even if you did not speak. So, thank you. And I'll turn it over to Joseph Devia, Army Corps, to close out the hearing. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, John. Again, this is Joseph Devia, Army Corps of Engineers. Please be reminded that the public comment period for this project extends to March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The Corps and MDE, thank you for attending this virtual public hearing and for your attention. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned.